Everyone, thank you all for coming. This meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to you all. Everyone who's come along tonight on this card evening. I'm councillor Simon Clement-Jones. I'm Chair of this local area committee and also councillor for Beecham Green Hill. The main theme tonight is Greenspace, Biodiversity and Food Growing. So we're trying something new at the local area committees, trying to make it a bit more relevant to people. I'm very, very happy to have all these people along to help us with that. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves and to talk a bit about the theme for tonight, I'll hand over to the committee clerk, Gillian Cooper, to read out the housekeeping arrangements and then just cover a few essential bits of business.
Thank you Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment to switch to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the council staff present. The assembly point is at the end of the drive and across the road on Oden Court. And the fire exits are out, the main exit there or that door at the side on my left. And the toilet facility is situated near the main entrance. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast by the council's website. You should be aware that the council is data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you would like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I can move on to apologies for absence. I've had apologies from councillor Thornton and councillor Diamond.
Just having an email in councillor Mary Road as well.
Councillor Road as well, thank you. There are no items that require the exclusion of the press, public and press. Before we move on to the main theme of tonight, I'll just ask that members and officers around the table introduce themselves before we get going. I hope I can start with you councillor Mary.
Councillor Mohamed Mary for Greath Park Ward.
Good evening councillor Eviullah, Nether Regent Sharrow.
Councillor, sorry, Nicka Bisharat, councillor for Nether Regent Sharrow Ward.
From Diana, it's the South Local Area Committee Manager.
Councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beecham Green Hill.
Marion Elliott, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley.
Paul Tepin, Green councillor for Gleedless Valley as well.
Thank you all very much. And I'm now going to hand over to councillor Marion Elliott. Oh, sorry, I have missed one. Can I ask if there are any declarations of interest? Nope, okay, thank you. Right, great. So I'm now going to hand over to councillor Marion Elliott and her ward colleague to lead the next section on Greenspace, Biodiversity and Food Growing. Take it away Marion, thank you.
Thank you Simon. Thanks everyone for coming and welcome to Gleedless Valley and welcome to Healy Parish Church. And thank you to Healy Parish Church for hosting us tonight. The first half of the meeting, we're going to be talking about food and sustainable food systems. So I'll introduce our panelists and then we'll have a Q and A. So if anyone's got questions about that particular topic, that's the time to ask them. If you've got questions about something else, there will be time later on in the second half of the meeting to ask questions on different topics. So we're all here today to talk about food, which is something that connects us all and food systems. We've got some guest panelists tonight and they're all working within different parts of the same system. So we've got Jock Stevenson, who runs the Gleedless Valley Food Bank, who's working on the front line, supporting people day to day who don't have enough money to feed themselves and their families. We've got Gareth Roberts and Fran Hulseall from Regather, who are working on building a more sustainable and fairer food future. And we've got James Musgrave from the Council Allotment Service, which is a crucial service that empowers people to grow their own food. So I'll pass over to Jock to start with, if that's okay.
I'm John Stevenson. I manage the local food bank here. We started in 2009, I believe, or maybe we're on in for two years and we're still going. Has the demand went up?
Definitely, without a shadow of a doubt.
Is it donations still coming in?
Yeah, yeah, they're still coming in.
But the donations aren't coming in if their demand is going out. So we're having to spend whatever money we've got on other produce. The kind of people we're, the kind of people we do, we do all sorts. We do with domestic abuse, we do with alcoholism, drug issues, low incomes. You name it, we do it, you know what I mean? Are we just a food bank?
No, we're a counselling service. We've got citizens advice there. We do a lot of mental health issues. We are in a very, very deprived area of Sheffield, Gleedless Valley. For some reason it keeps getting missed, but we'll get there eventually.
And contrary to what union leaders say and news channels, we do not feed people on 30 grand a year. See when all the strikes were going on, see our donations that you spent. Because people was on 20 grand a year, they're going to donate to somebody that's getting 30 grand a year. No, you know what I mean? We're lucky of the people that come to us are on 6 grand a year, right? Well, a young woman, she's, well, a young woman, she's on her 50s, she came last week. She just lost her job. It's going to take her five weeks to get any kind of benefits it's done. So that's five weeks that women's got to survive without food. So is food banks necessary in this country? Unfortunately, yes, yes, they are. I never thought in my lifetime I would see the need for that, but it's there and there is a need. Just all you have to do is take a walk up to the valley and you'll see, you'll see the poverty. You can see it through the roads, you can see it through the streets. It's neglected, it's run down. The people in the centre are neglected and they're feeling run down. They're lucky to go from one day to the next knowing what they're going to eat the next day. So I don't really, I don't really know why I've been asked here today. Normally I get asked because I'm a troublemaker and I tend to get myself in trouble in means. But trying very hard tonight to behave, that's Scotsman coming to England. We're volunteers. I've got 35 volunteers in total. And every one of them is actually coming to the food bank at some point or most of them, 90% of them, come to the food bank at some point looking for help themselves. And when they got the help, they decided they wanted to try and help others, which is great. That's how I was, I got help at a food bank. I was embarrassed about taking food for nothing. So I asked the old guy, can I help you? And that was in 2011, I've never left. I'd hope there comes a day when we don't need a food bank. But in this climate, I can't say amen. So any questions, just ask me at the end. If you need any information, just ask me at the end and I'll settle you then, okay? Thank you.
Over to us. Okay, hi, good evening. We have got some slides which are up on the screen and I'm going to talk to those. So yeah, I'd like to just talk to you two about building a sustainable food future in South Sheffield, Gleedless Valley and Moss Valley. And just to mention that we've already introduced us, this is Fran and my name's Gareth. And we're from an organisation called Regather, which is a cooperative here in Sheffield. Quite difficult looking up there and talking to everyone here. Regather was set up in 2005 in South Sheffield by people who live in the area. And it's focused on economic development, it's a cooperative. Our focus is primarily economic. We're interested in increasing household income. Our theory of change is based on creating jobs that are paid a real living wage and to increase the productivity of the local economy. We also focus on getting the best value for households through our Fruit and Veg Box Scheme, which sells organic fruit and veg across the whole of Sheffield. We do have a wide range of customers across all socio-economic backgrounds. It's primarily a values-based decision that people make when they decide to buy organic fruit and vegetables, usually motivated around environmental concerns. Everyone at Regather is paid the same real living wage from across the whole organisation. And we feel that's a really important model to maintain equitable earnings and involvement in the organisation. Over the years, Regather's proven to be resilient despite huge change and disruption. The cooperative model that we operate has seen us through periods of austerity. We managed to trade throughout the whole of the pandemic, serving up to nearly 900 households through our Fruit and Veg Box Scheme. We more than doubled in size in less than a week at the very beginning of the lockdown. And the Regather team, our suppliers, our drivers, our packers didn't drop the ball once. And we were serving vulnerable households, blue light workers, you name it. We were, we were there doing everything we possibly do, like everyone was. We've also won awards. We've recently achieved finalists in BBC Food and Farming Awards, which is a huge achievement and is a reflection of not only what we're doing here in Sheffield, but how we are seen regionally and nationally for what we're doing in the food system. And because of this, we have attracted investment and funding, which has enabled us to operate a sustainable model going forward. So essentially, we're driven by shared values and a vision for connecting South Sheffield, Gleedless Valley and the Moss Valley. We've got a handout hopefully, hopefully you've got at least one within reach. So this is just a way of representing what we do as an organisation for a food system here in Sheffield. We have the supply in the top left. We grow in the Moss Valley, there are other growers in the Moss Valley. But we also work substantially with wholesale supply chains. There simply isn't enough land under cultivation in Sheffield currently to meet the demand for the produce that we sell. Therefore, we are reliant on supply chains through wholesalers. Our main aim is to increase the level of local food production and reduce the reliance on those wholesale supply chains. Everyone likes eating citrus and bananas and fruit and other seasonal produce throughout the year. So we don't anticipate going without those wholesale supply chains, but we would like to see more of the produce grown locally. It comes into our packing facility, which is based in Sharrow on Club Garden Road. And we have our team who then deliver that veg box to the customer. We do that with electric trikes and currently diesel vans. And we're doing everything possible to get those switched over to electric, but that is quite a challenge. We then circulate the boxes that the produce comes in and reuse those extensively. But eventually, they do start falling apart, which is where we move over to the recovery box, which is all about closing the loop, creating a circular food system. So we, any food that is still fit for human consumption will go into the Food Works, Shipshape and Open Kitchen and various other local outlets. What isn't fit for human consumption goes to composting, which is where it closes the loop back up to the farm where those nutrients go back into the soil. So it's a circular system that we try and maintain. Okay, now you're going to have to squint, I think, to see that map. It's miles away, isn't it? That's all right though. Essentially, Fran and I are just going to talk through a series of sites that start in the city centre and move out towards the Moss Valley. And essentially, we're trying to identify and share an opportunity that we think is incredibly significant for making a substantial change to the Sheffield food system. So what we've got here are a range of sites across the city and we're going to talk about each of those in turn. So over to you Fran.
Okay, so very close to where we are right now. We've been working with the Gleedless Valley regeneration team for some time now and they've actually identified some sites for development, with some development potential. The Callo Meadow garages, which is at the bottom of the Bankwood Tower, have been bricked up, walled up for a long time. We see their use as a potential as a food hub. We're not going to define what a food hub is because we don't think that's far to define. What we have done is we've actually received some £4,000 of funding from the local area committee, which is allowing us to do this community consultation to find out what those spaces might be used for and to really sort of tap into the needs in order to, if we're going to grow more food, we might be wanting to process some of that food potentially in the Gleedless Valley. But there's all sorts of reasons to have a food hub, small businesses, et cetera. However, we've only done some very sort of preliminary investigations. You might just be able to see some tiny holes where some air bricks have been punched out in those garages. And those investigations have shown that there's nine garages there that might be available to use. But in actually, in order to make any progress with this project, and we've got quite a long way already, we actually need to secure access to the meeting room, which is at the bottom of Bankwood Tower, because that can be our base for working within the community. And we'd also like to ensure that we actually get an access and use agreement in place so we can actually do some more work on the garages. We're working in conjunction with Studio Polpo on this, who are another community interest company. They are sustainable architects. Okay, next slide. Thank you. So the last couple of years, we've really had an interest in this site. So we've been working very closely with the Gleedless Valley Wildlife Trust to identify areas which could benefit from more trees. And we have an interest in fruit trees, you know, we want to grow food, we want to produce apple juice. So this is an area that's actually been identified as useful for planting trees within an existing wooded area. Some people might remember it as an allotment if you have been around a long time, but it hasn't been an allotment for quite some time. So this is a map of the top plot and 11 trees are going in, they're on order. They'll be arriving in the next couple of weeks. So we've been working to clear the site and we're putting in various apple trees, including some cider apples and a couple of other fruit trees varieties as well, but mostly, mostly. Mostly apple trees. Okay, next slide please. And just up the hill, we're working at Lees Hall, again with the Gleedless Valley Wildlife Trust. So they're associated with Lees Hall Estate, which, you know, a lot of the Gleedless Valley landscape was based on the Lees Hall farm estate. So this area had this orchard attached to it and it's been somewhat overgrown and abandoned over the years, but good work by the Gleedless Valley Wildlife Trust to bring it back into use. So we've been helping them with that. And then last month, we hosted an apple day there and lots of apples were picked, many kilos. And that is currently, or it has been used and it's now on its way back to Gleedless Valley Wildlife Trust. Next slide please. And we've had an ongoing discussion to use a disused playground at Newfield School. So this was a site that was put forward to my colleague Gareth by the Eco Schools Head at the school, Portformly. And this is a suggested site for actually growing on to more trees, which will then be planted later at Coney Creek, which is actually a three-year project. So we've got a period of time in between where we can use the site, which is very local to where the orchard site is, to actually do some interesting science-based, nature-based education at the school. So technically, it's becoming an outdoor classroom. So we're really looking forward to working with the Mercia Trust and the school on this further. Okay, next. And then we've got Cat Lane, which is obviously a reasonably well-used roof, depending on how muddy and what the conditions are like. But this is actually the original farm track which connects our site. So it's like the node that's connecting between our sites. So we really want to make use of this, connecting up access to Coney Creek Orchard, actively make Gleedless Valley area. And what this will allow us to do is improve the track hopefully and improve active travel access for schoolchildren going from the valley to Newfield School.
Okay, so we're now moving a little bit further out from the Gleedless Valley towards the sort of peri-urban area of the Moss Valley. So the site that we feel is really important to make better use of in terms of propagation is the Norton Nursery at Graves Park. So these glass houses are currently used for storing mowers, but they are much more suited to growing plants. And so the proposal that we've been promoting through various conversations is for a large-scale plant propagation facility. So anyone familiar with gardening, but if you're not, I'll just briefly explain. Essentially, propagation is where you take the seed on to, you know, growing into a small plant that you then plant on. And successful propagation from seeds to small plant really, really significantly increases the likelihood of a successful crop because you've got over that really challenging first phase. So having a facility such as the glass houses to do that at scale and then distribute those plug plants across the city, because you could make literally thousands of plug plants, would enable a much more, higher probability of successful food production across multiple sites and just essentially support growers in all parts of the city in a particular way that is, you know, quite a challenge. And anyone that's tried growing food from seed will know that the likelihood of germination and growing on is sometimes a bit fraught, depending on various factors. We'd also be promoting the notion of composting on-site in order to create the growing media that propagation needs. So again, going back to this kind of closed loop. Right, moving a bit further out, we've got the Regather Farm Site, which is on Lightwood Lane, Hazelhurst Lane. This is a 15-acre peri-urban market garden. And I think the key point to make about this is, you know, just the possibility of recovering land that has been industrially farmed for decades into a more regenerative, biodiverse and fertile situation through regenerative agriculture and horticultural techniques. And yeah, the Regather Farm isn't alone, it's part of a much larger cluster of around about 34 acres with the Sheffield Organic Growers, the Moss Valley Market Garden and increasingly the Povey Farm where Moss Valley Fine meets a base. We're all using various techniques that are regenerative. So this next slide just highlights how it is we're able to do this work. So we created something called the Urban Agriculture Task Force. This is part of a regional programme called the South Yorkshire Sustainability Centre and it's supported by both the University of Sheffield and the Sheffield-Hallam University and the South Yorkshire Mayor combined authority, as well as all the local authorities across South Yorkshire. And the Urban Agriculture Task Force sits within a part of the centre that is focused on agriculture and environmental restoration. And anything we're doing in the area is fully supported by the centre and the resources that it has to offer over the next coming years. So this fits in a larger context. This map, which you can broadly see, highlights the types of soil that are around Sheffield. The urban area predominantly, you know, being in grey there. And what you can see is the yellow, which is grade three land, which in terms of proximity to the city is the best quality of soil that we have immediate access to. The other soil types are of a different grade, a higher grade. And also altitude, they're much higher and the climate, the microclimates that that part, those parts of the city enjoy are not as sort of favorable for horticultural cultivation, which is primarily what we're talking about. So we're just highlighting in the next slide then that exactly where the Moss Valley is. And yeah, in relation to Gleedless Valley in South Sheffield, obviously, it's very close and creates a significant opportunity for the city. And that land that we're highlighting here, and just moving on to the next slide, in red there, that's part of that Moss Valley area, is owned by Sheffield City Council. It's currently tenanted, so it has a whole wide range of Agricultural Holdings Act tenants on that land. But it offers the potential for local food, jobs, nature recovery and increased economic resilience. And in terms of next steps, we're working to create a farm cluster which will bring the tenants and farmers, the landowners and the land managers up to a landscape scale, working with the Don Catchman River Trust to develop a farm cluster, which is the best way of establishing landscape-scale land use change and recovery through nature. And that's the end of where I'm going to leave it, because I've probably used up all the time. There we go, thank you.
Good evening. Right, this is going to be a short introduction to the allotment service in terms of where we are at current, in terms of provision across the city and in terms of where we probably need to be within the next five years. We have a strategy review being currently undertaken, along with the handbook, handbook, rulebook as we're going to call it soon. So in terms of where we are now. So we're managing, plus it's near enough, 3,200 plots now across several sites. Managing tenancies, waiting lists, site inspections, health and safety, site improvements, allotment competition. And the key for tonight's presentation is the new sites. We have a duty and we have a duty to provide and meet the session of demand for allotments. Quite hard to see that one, but that is the city-wide, so that's the all that. The green is currently the number of plots we have on each site. The blue is the waiting list and the orange is the currently unlettable plots. The main focus at the moment is trying to reduce the blue, increase the green, somehow get rid of the oranges, which are the unlettables. They're merely scrubbed up after years of use, underuse and social behaviour, which has flighted been on site. This is quite an interesting graph in terms of, the left-hand figures are a percentage. The blues are what we currently have in terms of provision of plots. The orange is the waiting list. So if you can see the south, which is the second largest one, you can see that our offer is to 1% of the population of census within that area. And just under 1% is on the waiting list. If you go to central, which is quite the opposite, that's just over 0.2%, is census has access to a plot on one of the allotment sites within that area. So it would be advantageous for us and the city as a whole, the population of the city, to bring those up towards where the south, west and south is. But again, we have a vast waiting list which we'd like to see reduced somehow. In terms of the south lot, that is just expanding on the previous slide. So you can see the number of tenants we've got up there is up towards 800 and just below 900. We have nearly the same amount of people on the waiting list. We have nearly the same amount of people on the waiting list. And the yellow box is quite interesting because that's the number of clip-on concessions who take advantage of our reduced rates for social inclusion such as OAP, senior citizens, students, people on work tax credits, all that kind of stuff. Just a quick two slides to finalise in terms of where we like to go in terms of our provisions. So basically, that's health and wellbeing, happiness, that goes with having allotment, and what we can create in terms of the feel-good factor on allotments. And just finally, in terms of sustainability on allotments, the recycling, reducing air miles, along with what Gareth said about sustainable food-growing systems at the heart of each community. So that's all I have to say from that. Feel free with any questions. Like I say, that was just a brief introduction about where we are and where we need to get in terms of allotments and the provision we can offer to the city.
Thank you, Jane. So I'll open it out. If anyone has a question, just put your hand up, and if you could introduce yourselves before you answer the question, that would be great. Thank you. Does anyone want to start?
Can I just kick off? Kick off, oh, sorry. Marian Gerson, I used to be president of the Sheffield Allotment Federation, and we always wanted to have more allotments in the south and south-west, the problem being to find sites. Are you doing any better on that?
Again, we're currently working with colleagues within Parks and Countryside in terms of, especially Parks, in terms of identifying potential sites and progressing that with community engagement, communication, consultation. It is a mindset, a change set from away from what we consider to be amenity grassland. Again, the constraints are, there isn't that much spare space within the city. We have identified a couple of sites that we potentially can progress toply, Brook is one of those. Again, we're engaging with colleagues in Parks, such as Graves, to see if we can find areas within those. There's also, in terms of, is everybody aware of the UMP, the Urban Nature Parks Programme that were around about seven years ago? It was looking about how we manage parks for the benefit of wildlife and sustainable systems. It's potentially that is going to come again. So potentially, we can start looking at further sites within Parks. I don't know how we sit within housing, if there's a potential to get land transferred over from housing. Again, it's something, I'm new to post, I've been in post eight weeks now, but we can definitely start exploring opportunities within the urban plans, such as Gleedless, I know that's just gone. But in terms of developing out towards the townships further afield, then potentially, I'd like to see those, those types of schemes within those planning, initial planning applications that go in. So yeah, I can't specifically say for the south. Again, the reason I put that chart on about across the city, you can see the pressures we have within the central ward, the central lot, it's to do with space at the end of the day. But again, we, the graph showed we have unlettable plots, we have a budget which is constrained. I'd like to be able to access pots of money or potentially redirect the allotment budget to open some of those plots up as well. Some of these plots haven't been tenanted for a long time, they contain quite mature trees, it's quite an expensive job to clear those plots. But yet, it's, we can see from the waiting list, there are issues with provision, and it's something we'd like to resolve as a team.
Thanks for the presentation. It's very helpful. First of all, apologies for being late, held up in the traffic signal on London, Cheshire Road. I think as Fran mentioned, the project at Newfield School, I'm saying this because it falls within the Graves Park Ward. And also Gareth mentioned the concept of using the glass houses at Norton Nurseries. I'm just wondering whether, as part of that, whether you're looking at linking the two so that there is some learning, that, you know, sort of training or whatever, for example, that can be transferred to people involved at Newfield School?
Great, that's a great question. My daughter goes to Newfield, and my son will go there in a year or so's time. And that's a big motivator personally, to see the suitable facilities available for the kind of teaching that I think, you know, young people really need to address, you know, the climate and nature emergencies. We've spoken extensively with the schools, we've carried out surveys of food growing across, you know, in schools across the city, specifically asking questions around, you know, existing provision and the support that's needed. And, you know, there's a picture emerging of quite a significant level of really fantastic work already happening. You know, programmes like Eat Smart Sheffield have done amazing, you know, work to encourage schools to look at food, you know, as a whole school community. But specifically, the conversations with Newfield highlighted the playground as an unused space. And I think for Regather, that's really part of our kind of approach, you know, we aim to make better use of underutilised resources in whatever form they come in. So we, and we love a challenge as well. So, yeah, the premise of the school getting involved in raising fruit trees, which then find their way into the woodlands nearby, seems like a really sensible place to start. You know, growing tree offers lots of learning opportunities that we want to incorporate.
Can I just jump in as well? So there's a horticultural skills crisis that's going on nationally, and unfortunately we have a skills and training programme, a national qualifications framework, that isn't keeping up with the need for changing skills, and, you know, we're playing catch-up a lot of the time. So there is a huge opportunity in Sheffield with the assets that we have and the people that we have in the city to actually work together to create a new kind of educational system, and obviously, schools are a massive part of that. So we're trying something on a very small scale, which we feel can have much larger implications, and hopefully across South Yorkshire, if not nationally.
And the connection with the glass houses, I think essentially they're, you know, the reuse of the glass houses for horticultural purposes, you know, what they were built for originally, you know, I think would be a great way of bringing an unused resource back into use. How we connect that with schools and with education really does depend on the nature of the reuse. And I think, you know, we're at the stage now where, you know, the right, the decisions at this stage of the process, as far as we're aware, you know, will determine what kind of opportunities come about in the future. And, you know, growing food, and particularly growing food with the assistance of technology, so controlled environment horticulture, which is essentially what a glass house is, is a really important tool in the toolbox of improving our, you know, resilience to climate change and disruption in all sorts of different ways.
Thank you for that. It's interesting, and my colleague Ian will assure you, the glass houses when the original was built were state-of-the-art, so.
My glass houses, if we knew the possible world at the time, if we liked, if it was entirely on future control, so we could get the, get it going again, that would be a good idea.
Well, we're up for it.
And it's used to be the kitchen garden for the normal, and my goal is to have some of that.
Sorry, hello, I'm Renee. I'm just a field city farm, work for Foodworks, and I'm also a friend of Sheffield Social Enterprise Network. First of all, I think it's great we're having this discussion, growing more food in a nature-friendly way locally is incredibly important, so, you know, the fact that we're all here discussing that, I think is fabulous. My question for anyone who thinks they have an answer for it is how, how do we make sure that the food we are going to be growing locally isn't a privilege for the few, but is affordable and accessible for everyone living in this local area?
Here you say, well, or church grounds, here you say, far, and put allotments in them, and the produce goes to the local people, that comes to the food bank. Now, there's lots of green areas in the valley, and I was going to mention this, there's loads of green areas in the valley. Can we not put little allotments in them so the local people can just come and help themselves? I thought it would not work in the church, but I was so wrong. I was so wrong, like, because the kids are looking after it, the people, the people in the valley are actually tending it, you know what I mean? I think if you put allotments in little green spaces where you can get one, right, and let the people look after it, they will actually look after it. It would surprise you, surprise me. It really surprised me, I thought it was going to get destroyed, but I was wrong. What I mean? I thought it was going to get destroyed, but I was so wrong. People appreciate it. I think, a Hillyset Farm does amazing work, by the way, right? And the ideas just came up with that. At the time, I thought, they're crazy. I was wrong. You know what I mean?
That's a great question, Renee. I had a feeling you'd asked it. It's a wicked problem, there's no doubt about it, there's no one single answer. There's, you know, a world of food system problems, you know, to resolve, but specifically, you know, the challenge of local food production at scale that creates produce that's affordable, nutritionally dense, you know, good for your health, and accessible in a way that currently it isn't, is obviously, you know, what we're all looking to achieve. Now, our experience of Regather has helped us understand, you know, what some of the, you know, the barriers to that are. Currently, the scale of operation that we are able to operate is restricted by our access to land, which is why we're making the case for a change of land use in the Moss Valley to align, you know, policy with opportunities to scale up local food production. We always make an important distinction, you know, between community food growing and local food production. It might seem a sort of semantic detail, but one grows people and food, the other grows food and people, okay? And it's just a nice way that we try and understand what's going on there. Community food growing helps people learn, builds confidence, it does improve access to food, absolutely no doubt about it. It's a really important part of the jigsaw puzzle, but the barrier or the limitation there is the amount of produce that's grown, its consistency, its quality, its seasonal availability, and also the economics attached to it, because typically that food is grown and made available for free. Attaching money to that, you know, food is tricky. Whereas local food production at scale, you know, starts to address some of those economic issues, people can earn a living out of growing it and selling it, and maybe even cooking it, and it all starts to build, you know, economic wealth. So it's, you know, it's all of those things, like, that all have to happen all together, all at the same time, you know? And we also, you know, in order to address the, you know, the question and that challenge of affordable food that is lowly produced, we also need to ask some serious questions about our wider food system and the role of supermarkets, and how it is that supermarkets, you know, both buy food from producers, retail it, waste it, and so on and so forth, okay? Because the supermarkets are obviously the mainstay of our food system. They play an absolutely essential role, feeding the vast majority of the population. So anything that increases food supply in other parts of the food system in a particular way, you know, has to compete with those supermarkets. And there's no two ways about that, you can't escape that. So, you know, it really is a fundamental challenge, but I think from Regather's point of view, we promote an economic model first and foremost, so that things like food and housing and access to mobility, you know, and, you know, reducing energy, essentially it's about household income, okay? So we've got to, you know, address the economy in order to then address, you know, all the other problems that come from that. So we always make the case for, you know, building local economic resilience first and foremost. We've done that through food, we've demonstrated an example of doing that through food. But ultimately, the challenge that we face is one of household income and affordability. It's not one of food supply per se, because there is more than enough food to go around.
I want to just make one more very quick point.
Sorry, I went on a bit there.
Yeah, you did. Not like you. Yeah, what we're experiencing is a reality check of, we have a low-wage economy based on the fact that food's been cheap for a very long time. Food is cheap because we transport that risk to other countries, and climate change, India political situation's changing, so it is going to be more challenging to produce food in future. So if we invest now, it is cheaper to do it now than it is to do it later, because our landscapes will be in more of a condition to restore. We're already inheriting difficult land. If we leave it much longer, we might not be able to cultivate it at all. So without sounding too much like a disaster merchant, it's just a case of recognising what we've got, building the system we have, and then making it as efficient as possible so that as many people are included in it as possible.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask a follow-up question on this. I wondered, but the kind of, I'll say the three of you even though there's four of you, you know, you're kind of all working in the same area, in the same direction, well, the same produce but in not the same direction, you know, and obviously you've got Jock at the food bank who's giving the produce out to people in need, then you've got Regather who are following a economic model, albeit a cooperative economic model, and then the allotments where they're literally not allowed to sell produce, are they? And so I just wondered how we would join the three things together to tackle that short-term cost of living crisis and food poverty whereby the produce from your areas end up with Jock's clients?
My clients cannot afford to put food on a table, right? So I think what you're doing is absolutely amazing, but will my clients use that? No chance, you know why? They've not got the money, right? And it's not against your system, it's not against what you're saying, what you're working. I think it's brilliant, but my clients wouldn't be able to use that, right? And that's true. That's why I was, that's why I suggested any spare land in the housing areas, even if it's only a bit, where you put one allotment, one tiny allotment, let the people work it themselves, let them grow their own food, right? The people in the area will grow what they need to grow, you know what I mean? And they can get it for nothing, it's no costing them nothing.
Yeah, I think the, I think that is part of the solution. I suppose very quickly, I'd be concerned about the success rate of that growing activity, actually producing a viable crop. And I'd also be concerned about the significant period of time throughout the year where that crop wouldn't be available, you know?
I've got your point.
Because of the, because of the climate.
I've got your point, but teach them.
There are ways that you can extend the growing season, you can use greenhouses, glasshouses, polytunnels.
Teach the people how to survive themselves.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the, there is, there is definitely, a hundred percent a role for that.
Have you put up small allotments inside the housing precincts where local people can actually grow their own produce, seasonal produce, they will?
So a few years ago, Regather worked with the public health team at Sheffield City Council and the University of Sheffield, and we delivered a cash transfer voucher to every household in one of the tower blocks at Callo, it's called Fresh Street. And it was an emulation of the Alexandra Rose voucher scheme, which recently won a BBC Food and Farming BBC Food and Farming Award, which, again, shows what's going on. But the key thing there was that that's cash in people's hands specifically for the purposes of accessing fresh fruit and vegetables, that the voucher was, you know, only usable, redeemable, for greengrocers in the Moor market, and also households had an option to take a bag of locally grown produce. It was actually Healy City Farm that was growing the produce out of Wiltley. And we did that for over a year, and it gave us an amazing insight into actually what, you know, some of the challenges and some of the, you know, opportunities to address these challenges, you know, are. One of the big challenges was access to a decent kitchen, you know, that actually was available, you know, could be used to cook fresh produce. And that's often, you know, we talk about cooking, excuse me, cooking skills, you know, and we, you know, but actually...
Actually, the door should catch you up in the church. You're welcome there.
Yeah, great.
You know what I mean? There's always a way around things.
That would lend itself to communal cooking, wouldn't it?
Of course, yeah. It's open to you.
The, I think there's cooperative models, Co-op Towns is an amazing example. So essentially, you know, what Regather does is a product of a group of people in the city wanting to buy organic produce. So we give them that opportunity, we essentially operate a collective purchasing model. Now, you know, I think that's similar broadly to a lot of ways that we've been addressing food insecurity in the city. You know, we've been aggregating money, we've been aggregating demand for food, and we've been working out ways of getting that food into the right place at the right time, you know, and the economics of it are tricky, as you mentioned earlier. But the basic premise of economic cooperation, you know, to address these issues, I think is sound, and will see us a long way through a lot of the problems, but it's got to be about food and money, in my view, you can't detach the two.
I'll defer.
Well, that's why we're here on the panel.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. I like a lot of what you're saying, but there's some of what you're saying, it says my little business in the chat.
Well, we are a business, yeah. Everyone's paid.
I'm a charity.
Okay.
So I'm feeding people because they need food, right?
One's not better than the other.
No, I never said that for a minute.
Okay.
Right, I never said that for a minute, but if people can't afford to go to the shop and buy normal vegetables, how are they going to afford to buy organic vegetables?
Give them a job.
Give them a job.
Pay them real living wage.
It's easier to spend on it. We've been loving on the authorities last eighteen years.
Oh, that's not my fault. Who's in charge, the national government, isn't my fault.
I'm Jackie, I'm the manager at Grace Food Bank, three hundred percent profe for the last two years. If you were a business, you'd probably be really excited about all of that, and we're not a business, and we're appalled by it. And, you know, I've read opto-processed people, I've read Tim Spector, I was reading Felicity Flock twenty years ago, I know about the problems in the food system. People do not come to food banks for problems in the food system, they come to food banks for problems in the economic system. I have people who will say to me they would rather have a tin of spaghetti hoops than be given a packet of pasta, an onion, and a tin of tomatoes, because one takes sixty seconds in the microwave and the other one takes ten minutes. They'd rather have a pot noodle than a packet of pasta, because it just requires a kettle. They don't have, some people only have kettles. Some people might have a microwave and a kettle, they don't have access to cooking facilities, and it's an economic model that's been into food banks. You can fix the food system, make it as nice as you like, less people actually have enough money, and it's not as soon as getting a job. Lots of our clients have such poor mental health, they are effectively unemployable, and they all go and work in their own homes, their rental health, which is, with the latest suggestion, is just plant cloud cookie land. But, so although I really support, and I have often lots of grown my own food, I support all systems to make the, all ideas to make the food system fairer, it's not going to stop people from food banks, that's not why they're coming.
Thanks, Jackie. My name's Reverend David Middleton, I'm the vicar up in Deedless Valley, and I just want to firstly say thank you to all the panel for what you've shared and said, but also to pick up on very much on what Jackie and Jock were saying, just about the challenges of the meeting both the economic and the charitable foundations for supporting people with food. We have many, many refugees and people who have come into this country, brought in here legally, who are struggling, as well as other local people. And what Jock was saying about they'd far rather have a tin of spaghetti, because they can eat that cold, whereas actually if you give them raw ingredients, they've got to have a know-how to cook it, and this isn't in any way trying to be demeaning to them, a lot of them actually, life is so hard to prepare a meal or even to begin to know how to prepare a meal, is almost too much. And so, and not only do they have to prepare it, they've then got to cook it and pay for the utilities. And so what we do particularly at Christmas, is at Christmas particularly, is we help deprive families with both food, gas, and electric so that they can actually cook what they need. But the rest of the time, we're giving them literally basics such as rice, oil, and other basics, because that's what they know how to use, that's what they want, and they can't aff, they cannot afford it. And so, I mean, I love to hear what you're saying about organic food, but I'm afraid the majority of the people where I live don't. And in fact, actually, I have turned over a large slice of my garden to growing food, which we provide down to the church, which doesn't need to be cooked. And if you guys did do something in the valley, I mean, maybe we could work out a sort of a proportion of whatever you are regathering going to the community for free. I mean, that would be great, but I would... Yes, but the whole lot, if you're wanting to, if you're wanting to come in more, I really want to see something sewn up, that's been my passion, I've been here for nearly thirteen years. My passion is to see you guys sewn up and working together, rather than sort of, I mean, it's hard, isn't it, when you've got different models? But that's my passion for our people, and it's just trying to say, look, actually, they aren't middle-class people, they are people who have fallen on really tough times, and actually life is really, really, really difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Marshall, I'm Secretary of Woodseats Allotment Society. We do support Grace Bank and the Food Works, but it's on a very ad hoc basis. And I really feel if we have seven thousand allotment holders across this city, there are many of that seven thousand, far more than our hundred and fifty, who would like to support, we can't do it on a business level, but we can do it on a practical producing food for people who want it. It may come in a bit of a glut, and there will be a lot of courgettes, but we can, but we, I feel, I've felt it before, and I feel it even more now listening to you all, that we need some degree of coordination, because I know our allotments, we try and put boxes together, and it's just people contributing, it's not organised. Allotment holders put food in boxes, which is collected, hopefully, because it didn't work too well this year, it is collected and then goes off and is made into meals. And I know other allotment societies are doing similar things, but there is no coordination across the city, and I feel this is the area where the people sat at the top table there could maybe instigate something to get that coordinated, because there would be much, much more, far more people supporting it, thank you, right, far more people supporting it if there was a degree of coordination and knowing what happened to it, you know? There are many, we all have gluts, and we're giving it away, or it goes to waste, or it goes on our own composting. So if someone can get a grip of all this, and now, I can't remember how many sites there are, James, across all these sites, you know, and I'm sure we can, at least for the summer months, help you out. It won't be a business, it won't be on that level, but in terms of practical support, I feel that the allotments can do a lot more.
Thank you, how are you doing? I think in terms of, that is a very big ask. In terms of the coordination, I think that would rely with the charities themselves, the likes of yourself, and the societies.
The idea of coordinating a food system is really important, but it happens at the right level and scale, because it does, you know, it will play a role. But there's something called the market, and, you know, the market has become completely, you know, something that was never meant to be, but, you know, we've all been to the Moor market, we've all been to Earth Market, that was the basis on which, you know, food prices were set and that supply and demand was negotiated and trade was established. And, you know, in order to address the issue of coordination, then we need to start to understand, you know, how the current market operates. And, you know, the work that's happening around supermarket redistribution is absolutely critical to addressing, you know, the issue of food waste, because the supermarket food system is inherently wasteful, and coordinating that is absolutely necessary. Renee will tell you how it happens. Fair Share will tell you how it happens, the Trussell Trust will tell you how it happens. But the notion of that happening at scale, we should be careful what we wish for, you know, a centralised food redistribution system controlled by local government or national government, I don't think that's actually what we might want in the end, personally.
Hi there, Derek Martin. Food production unfortunately takes land, and we're not making any more of that anymore. Is there a mileage in having a temporary licence for food production on land that's identified in the local plan for development ten, fifteen years in the future, so that we can actually bring a problem now to be resolved by using that land, if it's economic, using that land now, not just waiting for it to be developed in ten to fifteen years' time?
I would say yes, all land that's suitable for agriculture and horticulture ought to be put forward for that use, but it's expensive and very energy-intensive to set up land for food growing, particularly when a lot of the land around the city is of what you would traditionally call the lower horticultural grade, and that's all the bits in yellow you saw on the map. And yes, some of that is being probably earmarked for housing as we speak, so a temporary meanwhile use is potentially very desirable, but if you're talking about long-term solutions, what's actually required is the local plan to stop thinking of all these different compartments. So we've got housing over here, we've got environmental restoration over here, we've got food over here, what we need is an integrated plan, and unfortunately, the local plan kind of missed the opportunity to make food an integrated part of landscape design and environmental restoration. And, you know, that's not unusual, you know, we've got very weak national policy on it. So temporary production on, you know, relatively easy to grow on, very easily cultivated patches of land is certainly a good idea. We have to weigh up, you know, the longevity, how much it costs to produce, how much land there is, so there is, behind everything, there's a, you know, an economic case, because growing land temporarily, if it's not going to make money, how is it going to be that that land is going to be prioritised for land in, you know, for future production? Unfortunately, you know, we live in the market, we do, I wish it was different, but, you know, this is where we are.
Yeah, I think what's just been raised, this show is quite important in terms of, we identify SUD schemes within housing developments, yet the great fault for climate change, why not change that to an allotment? It can do both, it can be SUD, it can be bio-sink, it can be climate mitigation. I think it's up at, it's up at a policy level, planning level, that we need to change that idea.
So that is essentially the basis on which, you know, the case for regenerative farming and agriculture and horticulture, you know, is made. When land is set aside for industrial agriculture, it doesn't serve the purposes that we need it to serve in terms of nature, in terms of biodiversity, in terms of carbon sequestration. So we're looking for something where all of these things can happen all at the same time, and it's on that basis that we support the growth of organic produce, because it delivers not just expensive food, which is essentially how it's being characterised, but it delivers on a number of outcomes that are absolutely essential to the ongoing viability of farming, agriculture, and horticulture in the UK. It's all about soil health, it's all about insects and biodiversity, pollinators, because if we continue to rely on industrial agriculture to produce our food, the soil won't be there in a few years' time, the insects won't be there in a few years' time. So I get the argument against organic produce, okay? But that isn't why we buy and sell it, because it's a good business. We buy and sell it because it's changing fundamentally land use and the basis on which the economy can function around land itself, viably and sustainably, because it's nature. And if we don't support nature through our economic activity, we're all doomed.
Did you have a question at the back, the gentleman at the back?
Sorry, I didn't have a question particularly, more of a comment and observation. I just wanted to applaud all the efforts of people who are contributing to kind of, you know, changing the food system and looking at all alternative means of addressing all the challenges that we face, I think it's fantastic. And I think, yes, it would be wonderful if we had something that was coordinated, but I think I agree with Gareth, there are a number of sort of fundamental challenges that require kind of a strategic intervention, and perhaps they're not there yet. But I just think it's wonderful, and I think we need to support it, and I'm a patient gardener, and I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
I think I was going to echo what was just said as well, first of all, you know, excellent awareness and presentation, and like Jock mentioned, when I got to know a little bit more about the allotments and stuff, you know, I was amazed by whoever started this office, excellent, especially being from the health background, mental health, you know, engaging people into these activities. But I do agree with what Jock and Jackie has mentioned in terms, because I run a food bank myself, so everything that they've said, those client groups that do come in don't have the ability, you know, the affordability, some don't have those facilities, so I can echo that, because since Covid, having those individuals coming through. But at the same time, I was quite interested, you know, you mentioned about fruit and veg scheme, and is that a cost on that as well? Is there a charge on...
On the voucher scheme I mentioned?
Fruit and veg scheme.
The box scheme that we operate, yes, it's paid for, yeah, we buy the produce and we sell it.
That's really good, and I think what was mentioned at the, by that lady, sorry your name, in terms of coordinating, because it's all fantastic stuff, and I think, you know, like, trying to challenge, sorry, and all the challenges from Covid to austerity and cost of living, I think collectively doing something and supporting each other, there will be a majority of the vulnerable individuals who won't be able to afford the organic stuff, but at the same time, I think if we pull together, there is always something where we can support yourselves, but at the same time, we're supporting, like, through our fundraising through the community, or whether it's any pots of money, what we tend to do is try to see how we can make those food available to those vulnerable people, and putting that money together and trying to, you know, support you at the same time, but making sure they still get it free, because we definitely know those people won't be able to afford it with the current climate and the situation. So thank you, each one of you for what you're doing.
I think we can squeeze in one more question, if anyone's got one.
Hi. I was late to the meeting, so I apologise if I'm going to say something that was already been said, but just listening to you, the thought came to my mind that when this country found itself at war in nineteen... at war in 1939, the government then realized that our food supply chains were going to be extremely vulnerable, especially for the produce coming from overseas, of course. And that's exactly what happened. So it set about a major initiative of encouraging the population to dig over any square yard that they had in their gardens or common land or anywhere else. It did something to improve the food supply. It wasn't a complete answer, of course, but it did something. But one of the main benefits of it was that it allowed people once again to see where their food came from and it reestablished that link between producer and consumer. And that's what we've lost over the years. I'm glad about the benefits of supermarkets because that's where I buy all my fruit and veg, but, and I'm not advocating that we should say goodbye to those in any kind of a way, but it does seem to me that we are in a kind of a new sort of warfare now with climate change and that one of the main things we ought to be trying to establish before we can bring about any other major changes is to get the population to appreciate how vulnerable our food supplies actually are, where the food comes from and the effort that goes into growing this and producing it for us. Because until we get that sense of our food being almost a luxury, then we're just going to be in a throwaway kind of world.
Absolutely, you've made some excellent points there that I would made of myself earlier if I'd had a bit more time. I mentioned already the state of horticulture in this country. There's been a House of Lords report last, it was published earlier this month, basically saying that we don't know how to feed ourselves in this country. It's really not very good news at all. We've spent a whole, a long time devaluing food, talking about the people who grow our food for us and pick our food for us in the most derogatory terms possible, paying them the least amount of money that we can possibly get away with, forcing them into modern slavery, you name it, we've done it. I would love to live in a city particularly that really takes the access to food seriously like our government doesn't and that could involve, you know, a Dig for Victory style campaign. I would say that most people would go, I have no idea where to start because we haven't been teaching the horticultural skills to grow food to keep us alive. Until we change that priority, we are helpless really, to be honest. So in terms of, you know, the connectivity of thinking about, you know, people who are receiving food for free at the moment, that's an incredibly vulnerable process as well. Some of that food could disappear at any time, you know, donations aren't coming in, that food might not be coming into the country. We need to grow more of our own food. It's as simple as that, but it's unfortunately hasn't been a national priority. There's no statutory responsibility to provide land for food in this country. We don't have an emergency response at government level that considers what would happen if food imports really stopped tomorrow. Basically, the answer has been let Tesco sort it out for a very long time. We are incredibly vulnerable to a system that currently takes money from people who are earning very, you know, it's difficult to earn a living in this money and they're taking that money and taking it offshore. They're not investing in our food system, they're lining their pockets somewhere in the safe shelves, no doubt. So it has to be this collective response and I'd love to see more land taken into, particularly public land, allowing people to grow their own food, but we are at such a low baseline that we're gonna have to do something massive to make that change.
Thank you for that. I think you've just led me to what I was actually gonna say, moving forward some suggestions for you and I'm going back in knowledge in terms of 15 years when I was head of property at the city council. And there are huge swathes of land that the city does own, which are in, some of them are in Greenbelt, some of it's amenity land. And I think if we interrogated it any further, there will be land that will come forward. The problem that you actually have is that, like I think you alluded to earlier, is the priority order of how they actually deal with that land. So what I would suggest we take away from this meeting is that there is a direct link to the department who's responsible for property and as for the sites that are actually available. Because I know I've seen a list and there's a huge list of acres and acres of land which are underused in the city and which aren't highlighted for housing at this stage. So there is something there for you and if you want to talk to me, I'm more than happy to guide you in the right way. Secondly, and this is going back, I'm probably gonna mention something here, I'm one of the people that's actually read the Allotment Act and the reason I did that was many years ago was when the city council were in crisis, they were looking at land for sale and they were starting to look at allotment land. I don't think you've added to the list of allotment sites that you've already got, probably not. And the question I was gonna put to you, but I know there's no time to answer that question, is how many statutory allotments we have and how many non-statutory allotments we have. And secondly, within the council, there used to be an allotments committee and I don't know whether it exists anymore, probably does, because there's an act of parliament behind this. But one thing that people don't realize, and I might be wrong here, is if a group of people in an area decide that they do want allotments, and I think James you actually alluded to that as well, then the local authority has an obligation to provide those allotments. And I don't think that has actually been challenged enough. So these are just suggestions moving forward, but thank you for the presentation. That's what got me to think about these things. Thank you so much.
There is green belt, there is green land in every region of Sheffield, right? There's green spaces that's not getting used. Why, oh why do you know, just turn them over, any vegetable plots or something and let people grow their own? It's no hard, it's no hard, it's not costing you any money. Right, what's it costing you? Nothing, permissions to use the land, that's it. I mean, people can feed themselves, have you showed them?
If the land is currently being leased, if the land is currently being leased, then a tenant is paying rent?
Yeah.
And if it was being used in a different way, then the rent wouldn't be coming in?
I know in Gleepers Valley alone, there's green plots of land there and all the day, all the kids there is go up and down on motorbikes, right? Use the land, use the land in the area to feed the people in the area.
There's different land in different places, isn't there? So when we talk about that sort of green space around Gleepers Valley, it's on people's doorsteps and...
Doesn't matter, that's the same people it'll be feeding.
No, I'm in favor of what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying it's suitable for that type of community food growing.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Whereas the agricultural land around the city has tenants...
That's got a different story.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But all the little green bits of belt land and housing precincts, it's the people who's running that that will get the good and the produce that's coming out of it, feed the people. The city council can do a hell of a lot more than this, don't they? And I don't mean that, I'm not saying that to just get it, I'm saying it because it's true. You know what I mean? The city council is full of red tape, nothing gets done, right? You see a problem, fix it. Then pass on it to the next man to fix it or the next man to fix it. It's all right, it's not hard.
I'd have to agree with that, actually.
Come in, my job is to feed people any way I can, right? And in the valley, but anywhere else, I've not got a postcode, I'll take somebody that's five and give them food, I don't care. But it's terrible in this day and age that people can't afford to feed themselves because they're tied up in red tape, the councils, sort them!
So we look after an area of housing land as a community green space in Sharrow and in order to do that, we had to form a particular type of legal agreement with the council, a community gardening licence, which allows us to do what we do, but it also allows the local authority to allow us to do what we do with that land. Have a guess how many days security of tenure we have? Twenty-eight. So twenty-eight days and that's the best that the local authority, given the current regulatory framework...
What do you mean twenty-eight days?
Twenty-eight days notice. So if the local authority decided to ask us to vacate that land, we would have to leave within twenty-eight days.
But are you getting to use the land for none, are they charging you for the land?
We can use the land for community food growing, but...
No, but are they charging you for the land, for the use of the land?
Oh, no, not this.
Oh, you're lucky you get twenty-eight days, mate. You know what I mean? If you're getting something for none, you don't look a gift horse in the mouth.
Oh, I think that's a very, that's an interesting point coming from you, actually. I wasn't expecting that, to be honest.
No, I mean, no, you don't, you don't look a gift horse in the mouth, you take what he's given you.
I would argue...
Make us carry the chisel, mate.
I would argue for a policy that allows the local authority to make that type of land available on a perpetuity basis, not twenty-eight days.
You know, I know what you're saying.
This is about land that should be set aside for community food growing.
I know what you're saying.
So, you know, and I think that's part of the challenge that, you know, we have to understand the regulatory frameworks that the local authority operate within and the restrictions that are placed upon, you know, disposal of assets, ties them up in knots. I've got a list of properties...
And I still need to sit and talk to you afterwards.
Well, let's go.
We really do, like, we really do.
Which pub?
No, any pub, mate. I really do. No, but what I'm trying to say is, if the council decided to help, it could help, it could help in lots of ways, right? Especially freeing up land inside the communities.
And buildings.
Oh.
And glass houses.
I've gotta say, none of the buildings are, they're not eight by eight.
Okay, I'm conscious that we do need to move on to the second part of the meeting and have some public questions. Can I just ask one quick question on food waste because I don't think we've actually touched on that? So it's obviously an essential element of a truly sustainable circular system, it's here, but can we be serious about this as a city without actually any food waste processing facility in Sheffield?
Oh, my word, what a guess. Yeah, there is a change of regulation that's coming up that requires local authorities to collect household food waste from the curbside and process it. Unfortunately, that's unlikely to happen in Sheffield for the foreseeable future because of the nature of the contract we have with Veolia.
Yeah, I know that.
However, being a social entrepreneur that I am, I would see that as a significant opportunity for the city to leapfrog this bonkers notion that, you know, curbside household food waste collection should be done by a multinational corporate in order to have them be paid to take away valuable nutrients, yeah, to then sell them back to us in some form, which is exactly what happens, okay? So we should be establishing the appropriate scale and type of infrastructure in the city to allow for that nutrient flow, okay, which we're responsible for every day of our lives because we eat and we respire and I'll leave the rest to you to work out, okay? That is the nutrient cycle, okay? And a significant part of that is the food waste that could be repurposed and it could be repurposed for horticultural, agricultural purposes, create jobs, it can create local economic value and that really shouldn't be left to the devices of a multinational corporate.
Thank you, everyone. So we do need to wrap up. If anyone would like to have a final sentence to part on, you all good?
I think I'd just like to say the issues that we've gone through in a relatively short space of time this evening speaks to the fact that we really do need to work together and so many resources need to be thrown at it because feeding people is the basics of society. Without healthy people who eat a good diet, we don't have a functioning economy. So let's talk about this. I think we're in a really good position to talk about it in this area of the city. Yeah, thank you for having us and let's continue the conversation.
Thank you to the panel.
Great, well, thank you very much Gareth, Fran, Jock and James and thank you Marianne for suggesting this in the first place and getting it organized. So we now move on to the second half of the agenda, which I've now lost, which is the minutes of the previous meeting. I'm going to ask members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the last meeting held on the 12th of July. Just to mention, there is an error under item four in the published minutes of the previous meeting of the 12th of October where some information has been omitted. These will be amended to reflect the minutes of the meeting on the 4th of July were agreed as a correct record. Thank you, colleagues. Now move on to public questions. Well, we see two in advance and I have two that have been given to me in the meeting. First one I've got from Lindy.
Question, well, as perhaps it is, it actually links in really well around the coordination stuff. I'm from Green Hill and I'm a part of a group called Green, Green Hill that is looking to help tackle the climate and nature emergencies, sort of bracketed through local action. And as such, we are part of the Sheffield Green Spaces Forum. And last week at a meeting, when we went along to that, the convener suggested that we get into lack groups and there were three or four groups represented in the south area and that just seemed like, and then somebody else in the meeting said that he was part of the southeast lack sort of environmental group or something. And it just seemed to me that it would be an opportunity for us in some way to try and exchange addresses and information. And I did sort of collect together a little list of, by trolling the internet, of groups that had some interest in parks or allotments or rivers or whatever and see if we could just get those together because we do have environmental issues as priority number one, or at least maybe, maybe it's not priority, it's one of the priorities of the local action plan and it seemed like a sensible way. So if anybody can, wants to speak to me after because they are part of a group that we could maybe link together for I don't know what, you don't really know how well you can coordinate until you actually know who the people you might coordinate with. So that just seemed like an opportunity, today seemed like an opportunity, given that we were certainly talking about nature and food and growing. So thanks for that.
Well, thank you very much for putting the question up. As I say, we'll do all we can as a local committee to help get the message out and obviously appearing in the minutes and we can put something in the local committee. So thank you for that. The second question I have is from Bower.
I think I listened to others earlier to trip that now, and also Citywide, it had a question relating to Green. Since this calls, yeah, for leaves that could be extended and probably an extra price. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. As I say, it sounds like, you know, a sensible suggestion if it can be enacted. We can certainly ask the appropriate committee at the council to consider it and what we certainly will do is get you an answer back in terms of the answer that you've done. So thank you very much indeed for bringing it, not trivial at all, I would have said, thank you very much. The third question I have is from Andrew Benson. If you'll ask the first question first and then the second question after.
Oh, hello, Andrew Benson, I'm just a local resident up at, near Abbey Lane. Sheffield Football Club is moving to Meadowhead in 2025, 2026. The roundabout at Meadowhead is not fit for purpose now. It desperately needs traffic lights and will certainly need them when Sheffield FC arrives. Is there any plan from the council to address this issue?
Okay, so thank you, thank you very much Steve for that timely question. I mean, obviously the plans for the, well, the new plans for the stadium only came out a couple of weeks ago and some of my colleagues, myself, were at the consultation that took place, but it's still going on for the next 20 minutes at the transport ground. And I think, you know, it's one of the questions, of the many questions that the thing raises. I think most of the people I've spoken to are quite happy about having a stadium there, you know, in terms of the fact of it. It's the issues around traffic, around parking, around road safety, where, you know, that's, we're really at the start of, we're at the start of that conversation. Um, I know that I haven't spoken to briefly today that they're um, you know, want to, want to engage with people and say what I want to find out the answers to a lot of those questions in terms of this. In terms of the council having plans for that roundabout, no currently. But in the kind of wider context is there is, it's called the A sixty-one project, which is looking at bust, I mean, it's, it's kind of as bus times between Meadowhead and Healy Bottom, which they're starting a consultation with the public on very soon. So this is, you know, all tied up with, as I say, the top of Meadowhead and, you know, traffic problems around the St James's and road safety issues at the top of, of Green Hill Avenue. So it's a timely question in that, you know, we're at the very start of this process. But, you know, these are the questions that are now being asked. And at the next local area committee meeting, we're having officers along to talk to us about the A sixty-one corridor project. Inevitably, part of that conversation is going to be about the plans for Sheffield FC. At St James's and, you know, a planning inquiry open to the public. And, you know, you will be hearing a great deal more about this. Um, so that's a, that's a long way of saying, no, there aren't any plans. But as, as, you know, as I say, as something that, you know, I mean, I think there must have been fifty, sixty, a hundred people at the, the initial, initial plan. So there is a great deal of, of public interest. And I know my colleague Richard probably likes to say something as well, thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Yeah, it's just, just to be clear, so at the moment, no planning applications or anything have been submitted to the council. So the council doesn't really have plans because nothing's been submitted to them for them to, yeah, plan about. As Simon says, the, the clubs say there'll be hoping to submit an application end of January, February time. And then at that point, there'll be a full, you know, a full kind of formal planning, you know, consultation where, you know, members of the public can, can have their say. And we've very much engaged with, with, with the clubs and, you know, they seem very keen to have yeah, public meetings and try to bring the, you know, community along and, and address, you know, any concerns that are, are raised with them. So hopefully, you know, what, what concerns are raised, we can, we can, well, we can address.
And, and I mean, the plans are pretty good. I, for one, am quite excited about the thought of having that kind of infrastructure in our neck of the woods. But I, I would say that it was overwhelmingly, the overwhelming problem was the prospect of traffic around there from, from members of the public. And also, of course, you, you know, they've got the recent experience of the awful entrance, exit at St James Retail Park as a, as a living example in front of them. Um, so I would just, I mean, again, we have to see exactly what proposal they put in. But the, the planning department in the council does have the capacity to insist on road layout changes that would have to be paid for by the developer. Um, so it is an opportunity. I mean, over good, like, the, the public definitely fed that into the, into the, the officials there. And, but I think that hopefully, you know, we can feed into that, that planning process and see that we get a good result from it regarding the flow of traffic. Um, I would also say that that car park, it is quite big. I mean, it was over three hundred spaces, wasn't it? I don't know exactly how many it was, but it was quite, yeah. It's quite
They've got that, well, the idea is they'd have removable barriers between them if they needed to.
Right, well, that's not what the guy said, who I spoke to. Well, he did say they would be removable for emergency vehicles, not for traffic flow. So we just have to make sure that if, if, if there needs to be a slip road or multiple exits, that, that we, that that's fed in. And, and it will ultimately have to be approved by the council, probably by the planning committee. And members of the public need to, to make it clear that that's, that issue needs to be alleviated in the final plans.
Thank you. They're certainly making it clear to me. Um, yeah, so thank you very much for that. And your second question.
Oh, yes. Um, I live in the Folds Lane area of Sheffield, which is near to Abbey Lane. And many cars use that road as a, as a rapid run from Abbey Lane up to down Hupcliffe and then down to Archer Road near Sainsbury's. Um, and I've noticed an increase of cars doing that in, in recent years. Is there any plans or was there any possibility of traffic coming or, and/or twenty mile, twenty mile an hour in that area?
Um, yes, thank, thank you for the, for the question. I, I think we've spoken before about this. So the, the short answer is no, not at the moment. So the, so the council has an existing list of, you know, twenty mile an hour zones that has been progressing over, over the current year. So over the, over the, over the past twelve months, there've been new twenty mile an hour zones in like Baitmore and Jordanthorpe and Herdings, Little Norton or Norton Lees. And it's been working through that list. And so at the moment, there's not a list for the, for the coming year. I imagine that, that, that list will be kind of drawn up closer to, closer to next spring or, or next summer, once we've completed the, the current list of twenty mile an hour zones. Um, but what I would like to suggest through, through the chairs, the committee contacts the the relevant highways officers and see if they've got a, maybe an advanced draft of, of possible lists, of possible twenty miles, twenty mile an hour zones for the, for the next municipal year.
Thanks very much, that sounds like a very sensible suggestion.
Can I just ask a supplementary there? Is this sort of view of twenty, twenty mile an hour zones going to be affected by this current government's disgraceful comment on, on that in recent months?
Unless the, the government basically changes the law to stop us, stop the council doing it, the, the council can carry on. You know, introducing twenty mile, twenty mile an hour zones. It is council policy to eventually introduce twenty mile an hour zones across all kind of suitable, you know.
That is from Jonathan Lewis.
Hello, quite a simple question, hopefully. Um, I'm just wanting to know what the process is to request a crossing on the A sixty-one near Graves Park. Um, there are crossings further down the hill near Morrison's. And also there's crossings further up towards the roundabout, which has just been mentioned. But there isn't one near the main entrance to Graves Park. And there's a lot of elderly people cross the road there. And it's quite, a lot of the traffic goes quite quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we will do, I'm just getting in touch with you with the, with the formal process for that. How to get in touch and request it from, from highways. And what I would say is, is that this, the A sixty-one corridor project obviously takes in that. And as, and as part of that, certainly that's, that's an area, you know, I think we need to look at. That corner itself, you know, is not great for pedestrians, the road's really wide. Um, and, you know, it's well used by the, by the nursery and people. So I'm just checking, it is the one, yeah, by, by the nursery of Woodseats, no, sorry.
No, it's by the Morrison's, it's on the main road.
Oh, right, okay. But anyway, I mean, regardless of, of where it is, it's, as I say, it's all part of that, that A sixty-one corridor. So now is the opportunity for local people to, to have their say and say, you know, that's, that's what's needed there. So I think it's around ten million pounds that's going to be spent along, along that, along that corridor. And it's exactly improvements like this that we need to encourage people to be walking, cycling and getting them onto the buses. So, yeah, absolutely, thank you very much indeed for your question. We will let you know how you can, personally, but as I say, it's, it's one of those things that, that, you know, we have the opportunity and will have the opportunity with the A sixty-one corridor to, to have a rethink about, you know, how people are moving around the city up and down and, and road safety, which, you know, along that corridor in Woodseats and at the, at the top of Meadowhead is a, is a concern. So thank you very much indeed for that. Um, we have ten minutes left. Um, I think, are you going, you can
Two minutes.
Okay, and so if anyone has a burning question they'd like to ask right now, just stick your hand in the air, or we can move on to the final part of the evening. Great, well, thank you very much indeed. I will now hand over to Diane Owens to give an update on the South Local Area Committee Budget 2023-24.
Thank you, I'll be perceived brief. There was a report that went out with the agenda and with the papers, just to say in terms of the presentations that you've seen tonight. Um, you will put them on the site probably tomorrow, so it'll be on our website tomorrow, so you'll be able to access the presentations from tonight. But with the papers, there was a finance report there. So every meeting, we just give a bit of an update in terms of the committees' budgets that they oversee and where we're at with the spend on those budgets. So I think I've mentioned before that the committee has a delegated authority. So for projects under five thousand pounds, just so we can boot them along in between meetings, they can be agreed outside of public meetings. So the report gives a bit of an update in terms of a few projects that have been approved under that threshold. The only thing I needed to sort of raise tonight in terms of approval from the committee is the project, was the project in the, in the report that's over the five thousand limit, which is a proposal to allocate ten thousand pounds to support the revitalising Jordanthorpe project. So for anyone who was at the last meeting, I talked about the This Is Woodseats project. So this is a similar situation in Jordanthorpe. So there was a round of funding called the Economic Recovery Fund Round Two, which was about supporting local business districts to increase football and sort of still supporting with that recovery post-COVID really. And it could do a range of things in terms of like public realm or improve things like lighting and seating and things like that. So there was a bid put in for Jordanthorpe and they'd bid for a hundred and ninety thousand pounds of funding from that round of funding. And again, this was another project in the air that was unsuccessful. So they weren't, they weren't successful in securing any funding. So the proposal from the South Lac is to allocate ten thousand pounds of their hundred thousand pound budget to support the revitalising Jordanthorpe project, to pick up a small element of their, of their bid and their proposal and do some of those improvements. And that will be left with the group really to decide what they'd like to prioritise from their bid. So it might be things like benches, it might be some street art, but that will be left with the group to make that decision. Linked to that, the local ward members have also agreed to allocate up to twenty thousand pounds of their SIL and funding as well to support this project. So overall, it will receive sort of up to thirty thousand pounds. But the proposal from the South Lac budget is to allocate ten thousand pounds. So from the report, that's the main thing I needed to just sort of raise tonight for members to, to approve if they are happy to.
Well, thanks very much, Diane. Um, can I ask you, members will brief that? Great, brilliant, well, thank you very much indeed. Um, so, well, thank you all very much indeed for attending this evening. I hope you have found this meeting useful. I say, thanks again to our panelists for, for very interesting, I thank you all for, for joining in the debate. Um, before I go, I did want to mention again the A sixty-one scheme. Um, and we will be sending out information on how you can get involved in that, get yourself heard. Um, and I think, I'm not sure, but it may well be on the connecting Sheffield website already. Our next meeting will be Thursday, 7th of March. The theme will be transport travel, but I think it may well end up being the Sheffield FC Football Ground. Um, and the venue will be in, in the Beecham Green Award. Um, there'll be an update on the A sixty-one scheme at that meeting and an opportunity to ask questions. Um, we will send around a short survey of feedback on